Okay, I see we're recording, we're gonna open the meeting right at 6:30. On 6:15, Ryan, if you could let us, let us hear the virtual meeting information as usual.
Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardson Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via Zoom. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you. This, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on Zoom, as Ryan just said, and we'll head into, to open session. So there's a few different ways you guys can let us know. If you want to speak in open session, you can, you can write something on the chat. And, you know, we reserve the time right now to do that. However, due to the virtualness of this and it being new to so many people, we, we definitely want you to, if you get on late or if you, you're on now but haven't decided, and I know there's only a few of you on, maybe I'll remind people again later. Feel free to please, don't wait, feel like you have to wait till the end of the meeting. We'll get you in there, you know, when it makes sense for the meeting. So is anyone here for open session, Ryan? Does anyone let you know?
I don't see anyone at this time.
Okay, so let's, let's get right into it. We'll start off with announcements first.
Okay, I just want to share. This is the main page of the town website. So the red link, which has been carrying our COVID information. If you click it, it's now been updated to include the annual town meeting information, which is a link right here at the top. And it brings you to the documents that we'll be handing out at town meeting. Some of them have been, a postcard was mailed to everyone in town, leading them to this site, but this is the town warrant. Tomorrow, there'll be posted detailed warrant article information, the recommended town budget, and a Q and A and roof conditions report for the debt exclusion vote for the center school roof. So again, if you go to the homepage and click on the red banner, you can get all the information you need for, for the town meeting, and of course, send along any additional questions you have. Also on the homepage, you'll see here the annual town election. This has its own page under the town clerk's page, and we'll link it to that red link as well. If you click on election information, it'll bring you to the sample ballot for June 30th. So I'll show you quickly. Which people were asking for. So here's the sample ballot with the question on it. And then information about absentee ballot voting from our town clerk Lori Reed, and information on how to contact her. So folks, there, folks can vote absentee ballot without any questions. There's no question as to why you want to do it. If you want to do it, you can. That's one of the changes this year. And if people want to vote in person, they can still do that. There'll be restrictions, we'll be posting information about how many people can enter at once, social distancing, masks, and all the other things. But we have seen a variety of town meetings and elections go off now across the state, and they, people are reporting a feeling of safety and overall adherence to social distancing standards. So next week, the 23rd, at the Curtis Rec Field, 6:00 PM is town meeting. And then the 30th will be all day voting for the town election.
So weather, right? So I was looking at the weather today, you know, it looks warm, maybe some scattered T storms. I know we're a good week away, but you want to talk about just, you know, if things are looking bleak?
Yes, so a less than quorum can continue a town meeting, so we can't have a rain date. But if, if it's not safe, or if democracy does not prevail because of weather, then those folks who are gathered can vote to continue the town meeting, and you can do that all the way up to the end of July if you want. So we're hopeful that the weather will hold for Tuesday, but if it doesn't and it's really bad, we can continue it to the next day. And then the next day after that, if necessary.
Okay.
I was reading something that's where they have let the state has reduced the number required for a quorum so that you can continue to have your town meetings. What is our number? Do we know?
So our number is 50. It allows you to reduce it by 10%. So we did miss the deadline for this with the meeting on the 15th. We'd need to have posted in the newspaper in several, a lot of places for seven days prior to lowering the quorum. And the quorum would have only been lowered by five votes or five residents. So I didn't, I didn't feel the need to call an emergency meeting to do that. And forgive me if I was wrong there, but our quorum will be 50.
Thank you.
Okay. It made a big difference in towns with 200 or 500 as the quorum. But for us, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay, understood. Any more announcements?
That's it.
Okay, so moving on, so we've got item three, which is presentations, the, the Country Hen Scholarship Award.
Yes. Might as well just bring both of them in, right?
Let's bring Nikita on first.
Nikita. Hi, Nikita, if you can hear us. Hi.
Hi, so okay, I'll just do a quick, I guess, summary here. So the Country Hen, who couldn't be here tonight, they send their regrets on that as well. And some of this has to do with the virtual nature of it. But so for the last four or five years, the Country Hen has been giving out this scholarship. They put up a substantial amount of money a number of years ago that was matched by George Bass, the founder of the Country Hen, and their parent company out in California. And there's a certain amount of money each year that, based on the interest received in the account, whatever amount of money that's in there for the interest, we're allowed to give out a certain amount of scholarship money for that. So this year, there was, there was $1,000 available. And as we've done in previous years, we've set up a committee, which was two members of the select board, Jeff and I, two members of the school committee, and a representative of the Country Hen. And there were a number of applicants, once again, which is so wonderful for us to see because, A, it shows that it is, you know, enough to make a difference to somebody, and it shows that, you know, these, these young adults want to put the time in to actually put together an application, because it's not just send in your, your name and your phone number and we'll call you. It is, you know, you've got to write an essay, you've got to talk about your community service and all that. So it is a very thorough process, and I've been on the committee since it's begun, and everybody takes it very, very seriously as well. And, you know, I think we all sort of think back to our own times, back when we know how much this would have meant to us. And so we want to, we want to make sure we, we take it seriously. So, so our first recipient this year, we broke it into two, because that's also a committee decision once we receive all the applications, and that was voted to, to, to award two $500 scholarships. Our first recipient is, and you're gonna have to tell me with the last name, I think, Nikita, Nikita Guinan?
Guinan.
Guinan, I was pretty wrong. But anyway, we want to just say, you know, I've got a little something to say here. On behalf of the Country Hen, and it is this. So an egg symbolizes the future, good luck and prosperity. Our hope is that the Country Hen Scholarship helps to start Nikita on her journey towards this. Nikita, we see great promise in your success, as indicated by your strong commitment to community service, both locally and abroad while traveling with your family and church or church. We're honored to be a very small part of your first steps to the future, and look forward to hearing about your journey towards starting a business. As a company that has worked to give back to our community, we admire your commitment to doing the same with your future company. Congratulations, Nikita.
Thank you.
So Nikita, if you, you know, we assume you haven't prepared, you know, a five or 10 minute speech, which you didn't need to, but if you wouldn't just mind, real quick, if you could just say sort of where you're going to school and what may be interesting you, you know, along the way, although I'm sure that'll change.
So I'm going to Boyce College in Kentucky. It's a small college, and I'm hoping to major in business. And then after college, I'm hoping to either start my own business or work for maybe nonprofit. Not really sure yet.
Well, that's wonderful to hear, and especially nowadays in the times that we're, we're living in here. You know, the, the sort of the care and the sort of level of reaching down into your own heart and into your own sort of experiences already at a young age. We look forward to, to hearing about things in the future. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thanks, Nikita.
Okay, can we bring Kelsey on? So Kelsey sent a message that I saw that in the chat, that her, her video was, was broken. I think she didn't want to do her hair, but that's just me.
Okay, we have Kelsey.
Oh, there she is, sorry, Kelsey. You're muted.
Thank you.
All right, so Kelsey, once again, all right, so you, you heard, I assume, what, what I said there about the Country Hen? And, and, you know, the, the way they've sort of set this up and the way they, they, you know, want to give back to Hubbardston representatives who have shown themselves to be real assets to our community at such a young age. And so, you know, as much as anything, I think you can be proud that a group such as the Country Hen with such a, a large contribution to our town in the first place has also recognized you for your contributions already in things that you've done. So I would like to read you something as well, okay? So an egg symbolizes the future, good luck and prosperity. Our hope is that the Country Hen Scholarships helps to start Kelsey on her journey towards this. Kelsey, we see great promise in your success, as indicated by your strong commitment to athletics during your high school career, as well as your ability to rise above the adversity of a broken arm right before the championship game. We're honored to be a very small part of your first steps to the future, and look forward to hearing about your journey towards your career as a police officer, like your dad. We admire your goal of helping to make communities safer. That is definitely something this world needs more of right now. Congratulations, Kelsey. All right, Kels, so again, once, you know, we're not asking you to make a speech here, but if you could just tell us, you know, sort of real quick, which a little of that did there, but where you're going to school and what you're, what you're hoping to do.
I'm going to the Mount and Gardner Community College, and I'm going for criminal justice to become a police officer.
All right, well, I mean, there's, there's a few things on this planet that, you know, should have, people should have more respect for than, than entering into that field. Doesn't matter when it is, but, you know, sort of especially right now. And, you know, I hope that your, your drive for that is even further reinforced by, you know, what's going on in the world and, you know, what, what, what you've seen around you and what you've able to sort of give back as you've worked yourself into, into life.
Yeah.
All right, so once again, we appreciate it, and, you know, thanks, guys, for, for coming here tonight, and congratulations again.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
So much. Bye.
Bye. All right. All right, well, thanks, Ryan, and, you know, thanks, Country Hen. You know, I, I hope they continue to do this forever, because there's, there's nothing better than helping out as kids are just starting off, you know, on their next chapter of life. Okay, so we're on to new business, Ryan. We talked about the order here. So why don't you just sort of start us off, and we get to item four, and, and take us where you, where you think we should start, based on our conversations earlier?
All right, Susan and Finance Committee, this, this might pertain and would have been part of my report to you as well. So if you want to call yourselves to order and pop on, we can start business.
Okay, that sounds good. Let's see, 6:46, we'll call the meeting to order. My entire committee is here, so that's great. We're, we're gonna skip item one, which was approval of minutes. We'll do that another time. So item two is, is now for Ryan to take over in terms of the report and, and other financial matters.
Okay, and so much of this pertained to both boards, so a joint board made sense tonight. And we have a guest, Weston and Sampson, for part of 4E of our new business on our agenda, which is MVP Grant, Water Study, Discussion, and Potential Vote. So Weston and Sampson has joined us. I just want to run, hi, it's Amanda from Weston and Sampson. I didn't know who was gonna be behind that name.
Kevin McKinnon is also on. I'm here for the MVP side of things, and Kevin's here for the technical side of things.
I'll promote him as well.
That was an early past the buck comment there, Ryan.
Okay, so why, why are they here? So we discussed at our last meeting, the, the MVP Grant and its findings. So I just wanted to pop this up, and the, the timing of this is important, because if we do want to file this year for an action grant, we, the deadline was extended, but it is in early or mid-July. So we need to, to get some feedback from the board. And I'm gonna call up a document here. One second. So as part of the, the MVP Grant, so MVP is Massachusetts Vulnerability Planning. So we're currently doing our MVP assessment and plan, which will be done soon. And this group, members of, of our town officials and staff, and interested folks around town have given feedback on what are the vulnerabilities in our town based off climate change. So some of the things that were identified and discussed were the vulnerability of our town center for water and sewer infrastructure. Our town buildings rely heavily on one well that's nowhere near the town center. And our economic development is, as everybody knows, complicated by the fact that water and sewer is not available except through well and septic, with very small lots going down the town center from its historical design. So part of the resilient town center was to look at, this overall project was to look at water and sewer and possibilities for redundancy, not only for our public buildings, but if there's any capacity in, in any well sites that could allow for a bigger project, a connection of some sort for economic development and to help, to help businesses and residents who are existing currently make sure they have redundancy as well. And the same was discussed with water, wastewater treatment, part of a 2011 study that identified sewer and water in a decentralized way as maybe a potential for Hubbardson, considering the cost of connecting to our neighbor's systems, which would be a lot of money for, just put it clicheally, for not a lot of, a lot of bang for our buck.
That was by Weston and Sampson, by the way, too.
Correct. And then.
Real quick, Ryan, so there's a comment from, from Ryan at Weston and Sampson. He did, just to, to remind us, if we didn't remember, that the deadline is upon us. It's Thursday, June 18th. So whatever we, we need to do to deal with this needs to be dealt with tonight.
Okay, thank you. So other, other considerations as part of our vulnerability studies that we will be trying to address over the long term with this plan and short term with any action grants would be backup energy at the school. So the school is the only really conceivably, ministerially owned shelter for emergencies, and the backup generator or the potential for energy doesn't allow for some of the necessities like heat and refrigeration. So it wouldn't be a good site for that. So right now, the only emergency shelter we have is the senior center, which isn't very big and doesn't have the amenities of a full shelter. And then we've also discussed some other issues like covert design for, for flooding and other, other potential damages that can be caused by winds and storms. So covert design was another thing that we discussed. So then this resilient town center became an immediate focus because of the way we thought it would impact the town. So this is the, the water and sewer side of the house. One of the issues with the MVP Grant, as I'm sure Amanda will get into, is you need to have matching funding, whether that be staff time or funds themselves in order to get these larger grants. So Amanda, did I miss anything, or do you want to take off on your part?
Yeah, I can chime in to say that I think that it's really normal to take a phased approach to the MVP program. I'm, it's currently based on a fiscal year, and so it's hard to complete anything in a year, especially when that's probably narrowed down to nine months after you do contracts with the state and contracts with a vendor. So really, you're thinking about what can I do in a nine-month period? That also doesn't overlap with the summer, so construction can also be kind of wonky and delayed. But in the document that Ryan shared, I, I think it's important to think through that this is gonna be a phased approach, that you're going to continue to apply to MVP in the years to come, to really see your vision come through on this. And not that it will be just MVP, there are other grant programs out there. I'm, and I'll say that MVP has been good at continuing to help towns and cities across Massachusetts see their vision come to fruition. So they have funded grant programs year after year to really see a project go from concept to construction. And the match, as Ryan said, is 25% match of the total project costs can be covered in kind or as cash. I'm, and it has to be appropriated and, and ready to go. And so that's another thing to think through in the future as you're preparing budgets and so forth in future years, always keep in the back of your mind. And do we want to apply for any grants this year? And what exactly do we want to apply for, and how much money will we need? And one point that I, I think is timely for this project in particular is that it connects with some broader budgetary goals. And Ryan, you are more fluent in this than me, but I know that the roadway is set to be financed, like a reconstruction of the roadway by Mastat in fiscal year 2022. And, and so I think some of the steps listed in our proposal was really to gear up for that so that you could have some cost savings in construction later down the line, that you wouldn't be looking to finance construction on water and wastewater, that you might be able to find some synergies and savings when the roadway construction comes in 2022.
You mean, like putting in pipes during full depth? You know, we're doing a full-depth reclamation, it's not just a mill and overlay, it's a full-depth reclamation, so it will be down to some sort of subgrade, we could just trench through, is that what you mean?
I'm looking at Kevin, and he's saying yes.
And so just to add on, the, the board during our goal-setting sessions earlier this summer and discussions we've had about the long-term projects, both financial and otherwise in the town, are, are threefold. What do we do about economic development? What do we do about some of the land that we have, such as the town pit area? And how do we make, make our town center more, more attractive, right? One of the things we're doing is the town center project, which is great, has been in the works for a long time, and it's gonna happen. One of the questions that we continually have is, what can we do with that stuff? And, and how can we make it all viable and happen? So I don't think that this town center study, I think it helps us with our, with our vulnerabilities, for sure, and make sure that we have a consistent water source for all of our town buildings. But I think it'll also help us understand what can we do and what can we not do in terms of municipal building sites, economic development for the town center, for attracting businesses, et cetera. So it's a stepping stone to how do we build that master plan or 10-year plan while at the same time addressing our vulnerabilities? So the reason why we're bringing the Resilient Town Center in front of you tonight for a potential decision is the longer we wait for, for some of these information gathering tools, the longer it'll be till we have some type of bigger plan that we, that we'd all like to see. So if we want to apply for the action grant now, which would allow us to do an analysis of drinking water availability for our town center and surrounding areas, we could use some of the monies that have been saved this year in the selectman's budget or otherwise to, to match that grant money at 15,000, let me just pop that up here, at 15,000 in order to get the $100,000 grant it would require to know some of these things. And as Amanda said, it would be a piecemeal discussion, because we want to do all of these vulnerability action grants, but which one do we start with, and what are our priorities, et cetera? We could also continue to build the vulnerability and assessment plan, and then start applying next year, rather than, than pushing through this first phase with a, with a longer-term phase approach. But the deadline is requiring sort of this immediate decision. So.
Well, if, if anything, we found over the last, I don't know, 10 years or so, you have to just start. I mean, you know, it was a, a good 10 years ago when we first got town meeting approval for the design of Route 68 South and Route 68 North. Route 68 South was done last year, Route 68 North is doing this year, and it's, it's been nine or 10 years. The, and we just started, and we just had to ask. And with the town center committee, that started with a concept design in 2015, and it's gonna get built in 2022, so seven years. So I guess that's my thought on these things, is you just, you just, you can always just wait, but might as well just start. And if it's something that clearly becomes obviously impossible, then we, you know, you can, you can slow down or pivot or whatever else. But in my opinion, just, you know, from, from recent experience, it seems like a good idea if we're on board for something, just, just start.
So this study would, this water study or town center resilience, water side of the study would allow us to answer some of the questions, what can and we cannot do. And some of the things like with the, with the town pit or the town center, there's a lot of ideas, and it would be nice to cut some of them out, so the planning could become more focused. One of the issues I'm having with RCAP, USDA, and some of the other federal grant programs is there isn't a plan in place. So we say, we'd like to develop our town center for water and sewer in order to provide more economic development, and they say, great, let's see your plan, let's see what studies you've done and what you want to get done. We don't have that next step, so we can't apply for, for some of the bigger grants like Mass Works and others, because we don't have this information. So that's on the economic development side. It's also very, it was very illuminating during the, the planning discussions that if, if our well goes, which isn't like, it's not necessarily gonna go right now, but if we don't have backup or water redundancy, then that takes out our school, our library, our police department, and our slate building, right, our town offices. So kind of getting a lock for, for one study that's advancing a study as dancer that was done in 2011. So here is the cost. And our engineers and partners can talk certainly more about this, but I'll focus you on the town match side, which would be 15,000 in order to kick these off. So we'd be investing 15,000 in order to get information that, that might help us for the very long term. And the here is the scope of what we would get for that. So it's not just a feasibility study, as we're used to, it's also testing, major testing at two sites in order to understand what, what we can do with water. And the answer might be nothing, but it would be good to know, because then we could put the.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Can you go back to, can you go back to the previous screen?
Sure.
So as a small cash-strapped town in Noah's Central, Massachusetts, as many are, when something like this, if we, you know, are able to come up with the money and decide that it's, it's the right direction to go in, and then items, you know, such as, you know, the, the $20,000, $500 cost for test well, test well drilling, what if something goes wrong and those double? Or something like that happens? Or can that happen? Like, does the match then, are we automatically on the hook for a match? How does that work?
I can speak to that, Dan. I think generally speaking, when we get into projects like this, we do a little bit of research on what the typical depth of the overburden might be, what we'll be drilling. what the typical depth of the overburden might be, what we'll be drilling through. And we've done a little research in this area. We kind of have a good handle on setting up a budget for the drilling operation here. And typically what we do is on each site that we're interested in drilling, we'll scope three test wells and then that fourth test well will be an observation well that we can observe while we pump one of those, you know, the most favorable test well. So adjustments can be made in the field if all of a sudden, let's say you drill to 100 feet and I didn't expect you to drill to 100 feet, I expected you to drill to 60 feet. We may have to cut down on the number of holes that we put in the ground, but we can make infield adjustments to stay on budget, if that answers your question.
It does, you know, that's completely reasonable. And it's not like we've got this vast area of investigation that we're looking at that we're just trying to hit and hope, right? So we've already, you just said, we've already got a very good idea what's going in. And if we have to adjust because things do change, it looks like it's adaptable.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
To move on to get started, what do you need from us? Is this a simple motion or what would, how do you want to do it?
So the reason why this decision's coming to you is this could be considered from the selectman services budget, which we came in under this year because of less legal costs. So we have the ability to appropriate from FY '20 the $15,000 needed to match here. But it's a financial decision that needs to be made by the board that you want to invest this money to have this type of study. The alternative would be to wait the year and appropriate this money at a town meeting using free cash, which is more of our normal approach. So either one is fine, we just didn't want to spend the money without first talking to the board and getting a sense that this is something you wanted to do. It's something that you had directed me to look into. And of course, the decision comes right at the end of the year. So if you want to direct me to do this, we will invest and move forward with this plan. If we'd rather take a step back and try and do it all at once or in a larger plan, that's fine too. But we needed to hear from you.
Well, go ahead.
I agree with Dan. Let's get started. So I'm on board for that.
I could just say one more thing towards the two is this isn't something that is just randomly come up tonight. We've been working on, or I've done very little, participated in two meetings. But the MVP program has, you know, been a few months now into, you know, Hubbardston's world. And Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had some pretty good contributions from the town in attending the different sessions that were in there, you know, albeit virtually. So there's definitely some momentum and just saying in another year feels like you're losing some of that momentum.
For sure. And the work of the committee, you know, the goal in all of this is to try and get, because what you said, we have limited resources, we're trying to get them all moving in the same direction. So you got town center money trying to revamp the roadways and the walkability of the town. You've got studies like this that are looking on how can we get a little bit of economic development going so we can attack the budget deficit, which will allow the planning board to shape the way we target commercial zoning and other things that might help the tax base. So it's all over the place, but we're trying to squish it all into one central plan, which will become part of the master plan. And then when these decisions come up, it'll be easy. We're just going to keep investing in the longer term in order to set the direction of the town for the next, you know, 20, 30 years, hopefully. So I don't want to promise that this is going to result in some big decision, but it's definitely going to be a step in the right direction.
Yeah, I agree. Does anyone else, whether on the board or from Western Sampson or really anybody else, feel free, if you've got any questions or whatnot, or anything you want to contribute to this conversation, this is a good time. Okay, well, I guess we're at a point now where if we want to move forward here, will somebody would make an emotion, Ryan?
Yes, you'd be moving to authorize me to appropriate $15,000 from this year's budget in order to support the action grant for the town center resiliency study, water study.
I'll make a motion, also move, you want me to state it or is that enough to? Just with what Ryan just said.
That's good.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, great, Chris seconds. Is there any discussion from anybody on the board or elsewhere? No? Okay, so we'll roll call vote. We have three of us, we have a quorum tonight. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Dan, yes, it's unanimous. So great, I think this is a wonderful step. Amanda will be talking to you tomorrow and get this done. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks guys. Talk to you guys.
All right.
Get them out of here. They got themselves out of here, okay. All right.
Okay, sounds good. So we backtrack a little bit.
So moving down the new business in here with the finance committee. So everything here is for everyone to include the town meeting discussion. So COVID-19 reopening, to touch on that real quick. We have started curbside service for the library, which is definitely exciting and a sign that things are moving forward. The next step would be in Phase Three, some light browsing or socially-distanced browsing, opening in the hours that our staff is working there, but that plan is not finalized yet. But the library is moving in that direction. Town offices, we are starting to bring folks back for a Phase Three appointment-based opening, which would allow residents who need to come and speak to our staff in person or who wish to can come in a socially-distanced way and participate with our staff, moving towards a full opening or office hours in Phase Four. When I'm saying the phases, I mean the state's plan. And this week, or last week, I should say, at this point, my weeks are getting blurred. We did open the parks for the playground equipment at both parks, at the school and at Rainbow's End, and also the skate park and the athletic courts. So things are moving in a direction of being more open. We don't have answers right now in the senior center, but I have been in contact with them and we're working on a plan. That would be the last thing we open here in town. And then getting a lot of questions about public meetings. So getting off of Zooms, we can meet in person again. We need more guidance from the state and the Board of Health, and we'll likely bring that to this board and the Board of Health for a decision on what we want to do there. But towns right now are not meeting in person, so we're not, say, the last town on Zoom. We would be the first ones off Zoom at this point. So we just want to make sure that we're not keeping folks from attending meetings if they want to. And some people have expressed that even if it was in public and outside, they still wouldn't want to go. So would they go anyway, would they not? I don't know, I've heard all the arguments, but that's where we are at right now in terms of opening and decision-making.
Have we had, so just on the COVID discussion here, so this is the first time we're meeting since the next, the Phase Two of opening of the parks and whatnot. Have there been any issues?
None reported, no reported issues. And people seem to be being respectful of each other's space. People do want to use our public spaces, but they want to use it safely and people seem to be respecting each other in that sense, which is nice. And we just ask for that to continue. Nothing to the police, nothing to me, nothing to parks so far.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so town meeting. Couple items here, so I'm going to talk about the logistics of town meeting and then the town meeting warrant articles, which would also include, the finance committee has taken on itself to write the four argument for Article 19, which is the roof, the roof debt exclusion vote for Hubbardston Center School. So we can definitely get into that and refine that tonight to get that out to the public since both boards have recommended that article. So this right here is a picture of Charlton. My friend Andrew Golis is the town manager there, used to be in Berry. So Charlton held their town meeting last night and this is what it looked like. So single seats, six feet apart, spaced. Okay, so you can picture this for our town meeting. In the front, you'll have the tables that you're used to with even more space. So you guys don't have to be on top of each other. There'll be microphones, a central microphone for the moderator and microphones at the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee at the chairs. And then there'll be three mics, one on the outside aisle, one on the inside aisle, and again on the outside aisle for folks to line up six feet apart and speak at. People will be required to report whether or not they're feeling symptoms when they sign in. They'll be asked by our election workers, if they are feeling sick, we are desperately asking them just to stay home. So we're avoiding any issues there. If they are not and they are willing, we're going to make this a safe and efficient operation on the 23rd. So all items will be placed at the chair. There will be sanitation materials and extra masks. People will be required to wear their masks. We cannot ask people if they're wearing a mask, if they're not wearing a mask because of an underlying health condition. But we are asking and pleading with folks to wear masks if they can, and it's healthy for them to do so, so we can keep everybody safe and not be the town that had the town meeting that spread more COVID.
So I have a question for you, just logistically, because you're talking to all the people who might be talking during it. Do we have to pull, can we pull down the mask to speak to the microphone? Or should we leave the mask on?
It's like, we didn't plan that, but it's like, you knew what I was going to say. So I'll show you the checklist that we're working with. And the team has been Bobby, myself, Lori, and Brittany have been working on this along with Travis and our town moderator Renee. So this is the guidance for town meeting and that answer is down here. For mask face coverings. Let's get to it real quick. Okay, so right here, individuals addressing town meeting may remove his or her mask covering while doing so, provided that they're able to stay six feet away. So the way we're meeting that guidance is the microphones will be six feet away. Anyone speaking will be six feet away from the next person speaking, and you can pull down your mask and speak. So that'll be true for our town officials and for residents that want to talk.
Ryan, I had a question based on the previous slide of that other town you were showing. Is it my understanding then, we are also going to be using the parking area for our meeting? And if so, where will people be able to park their cars?
So this is just to show, so the meeting is actually going to happen where the fair is normally held on the rec field in the open, in the grass, not on the parking lot. So parking will be available.
All right, thank you.
Have signs up asking people not to crowd as they're going into town meeting because there will be a little bit of a bottleneck in the beginning as we sign people in.
And just to reiterate you, so we will have police details there.
So both Ryan and Chief Perrin will be there and they'll be there for the entirety of the meeting. They're hoping for just a community presence and participation, but if necessary, they will enforce any rules and make sure that folks are following the guidance so that everybody feels safe and has the ability to vote.
Will everybody be asked to come in the same entry point to kind of, because they still have to sign in to get something, the card to vote for it, right?
Yep. And, you know, if it has to be me or myself, we'll just be spacing people and putting markings on the ground as they come in and moving them through as quickly as possible.
Okay. All right, so clearly, we're not, it goes without saying here. Typically, we do a state of the town sort of thing. I'm definitely not going to do that now. So if we have a special town meeting in the fall or something, that could be time for that. But I think anything that's unnecessary to the mechanics of getting through annual town meeting, we probably stay away from.
Totally agree.
Yeah, the idea would be any deliberations that need to happen, get all the time they need and everything else is really fast, so.
All right.
Okay, so just wanted to share with both committees, both boards, before we get into the question for some school roof information that we've added to the, to answer a lot of questions we've gotten on social media and by email, and there has been a lot. So it's not one of these, I just got one email. We've had quite a few people asking about the center school roof, which is not surprising. It's a big decision. So the, again, on the town meeting, on the town homepage, there is a link to the town meeting. And if you follow the link to the town meeting documents, you'll see here that the debt, center school roof debt exclusion Q and A and roofs conditions report have been posted. So we got this directly from Answer Our OPM. And these are questions that come right from emails or from social media in their entirety and have been answered to the best of our ability as to why this needs to be replaced, what needs to be replaced, and providing as much information as possible. So this is available for folks and we will print it out and put it on everyone's seat so they can have as much information as possible. And also at the end, there is the current conditions report, which allows folks to see why this decision was made and why the MSBA decided that of all the projects and roofs in the state that we're asking, we were one of the few that got picked this year because the condition of the roof is not good. The majority of our questions have been about the tax impact and also why this roof needs to be replaced and why wasn't it done right in the first place? Which is, just unfortunately, we're at a situation where the roof needs to be repaired and it wasn't done correctly the last time. And we are doing what we can to correct that and make sure that it doesn't happen again. So that is what is available to folks. And we also have, I wanted to show you.
And I'd just like to say, I appreciate you being able to keep your cool on all the comment answers. Like I read through them all too and I was seething after some of them because, you know, it's typical social media stuff at times. It's mean, it's ignorant. There are other things that make it just counterproductive to sort of, you know, getting something done that is needed to get done to, you know, overall, keep the kids safe. So I appreciate you keeping it cool throughout as usual.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tough decision and it's confusing, a lot of it, and I get it. So if anybody has any questions, fire them away. I will say, and I'm not going to hide the fact, that this roof needs to be fixed no matter what. So you either do it with 60% of it paid by the state, which might have increased some of the costs, but it definitely would not have increased it to the level where you'd be saving a ton of money doing it yourself. Or you do it next year or the year after and you're paying the whole thing. So rather than paying 40% of the bill, you're paying 100% of the bill. Either way, the roof needs to be fixed. So I don't know how to be more blunt than that, but just doing the best we can to limit the damage. So.
There's no question about that. I took the tour, I was up on the roof with the people and so forth. And also, or in the school, where we would see where all the leaks were, absolutely. I'm curious, can I get access to some of the questions and responses that Dan and you were referring to?
Yes, so I'll, most of them are in the Q and A, in the condensed version. But I can certainly send some of the social media pictures. And we encourage people to ask questions. I mean, we're not, hey, it is what it is. So this is some documents that I wanted the finance committee and Board of Selectmen to see. And I know this is small, I apologize, but finance people always do things in tiny little things. So this is, so what is a debt exclusion? A debt exclusion is borrowing over a set period of time. You're saying that you can raise taxes above Prop 2.5, Proposition 2.5, in order to pay the borrowing costs. So here, we would be borrowing no more than $1.3 million over a set amount of time. And the cost to pay off that loan every year is what we're asking taxpayers to support. So we did some calculations with Unibank, which is our financial advisor. And we looked at how much would it be to borrow for 20 years, for 15 years, and for 10 years, which we thought would give us a broad approach to how much do we want to burden, do we want to put on the taxpayers? So if we put 1.3 in one year on the taxpayers, the cost would just be too much for the average household to bear. But you also don't want to go too long because then you're paying a lot of interest and not maximizing the limited resources that we have. So if you look here, this is a 20-year borrow. So of the 1.3 million we'd be borrowing, we'd end up paying almost half a million dollars in interest over 20 years, which is, you pay interest when you borrow on the municipal side. It's just unavoidable, but you need to try and limit. Which is, you pay interest when you borrow on the municipal side. It's just unavoidable, but you need to try and limit the cost. So that would create about a $90,000 a year payment. And for every. I'd say for every $100,000 you exclude on the tax rate, you're paying about, this is about $45. Okay, so this would be a 20-year, would be a $45 increase on the average household, but you'd be paying that half a million dollars in. In interest. So here's a 15-year, here's kind of a middle ground. Again, you're borrowing around 1.3, and you end up with interest levels around 400,000. And then your average year is approximately 110,000 or about $60 per household per year. And then this is the one that our finance team will be recommending to you and the Finance Committee, so this is a 10-year borrow. The average payment every year to pay off principal and interest is 150,000. Limits the interest to under 300,000 on this borrow. Which would create the $87 per average household tax increase. How we calculate that? We don't have to make these borrowing decisions today. I'm just trying to show what we're thinking and how we're creating the numbers so people understand. I'm just going to show you, just bear with me for one second, please. We put up, and this was in the post that we're putting out to the public, again, we're just sharing information and staff recommendations at this point. Here we go, here is, so the Department of Revenue has a debt exclusion calculator, so they take our current tax rate. And they, you put in how much you need to borrow per year. So I took the $150,000. That it would cost to pay the principal and interest from this loan and put it into the DOR's Tax Impact Calculator. So the average home in Hubbardson is 280,000 to round it off. That home would pay $86.49 or $87 a year in additional taxes in order to support the school roof. So you can then take this picture and extrapolate your house cost and how much that would equal for your home. Depending on the home value, so the more your home is worth, the higher the taxes would be because of the tax rate impact. So the average home, and there's homes here that are in Hubbardson that are less and that are more, would pay 87 per year. For 10 years, which is the length of the borrower recommending. If we were to stretch it to 20 years, we could limit that impact to, say. $50 per average household per year. Which would be about $36 less per month, which is why we're recommending that we don't pay the extra 200,000 in interest. We might need that for another project sometime. So that is. The school roof information will provide, continue to provide answers to folks. And I know Maria, if you're with us, you worked on a. So by statute, we do a for and against. The Finance Committee has recommended this Warren article, and it said they would write the for. Argument for the ballot question, which will be answered on June 30th. Maria, do you want us to walk us through this if I put it on the screen?
I think we're using Josh's version.
Josh, do you have it?
Um, yeah, should I email it to you? How do I get it?
If you email it to me, I can pop it up real quick.
Oh, okay, yep. And actually, and then actually Chuck had put a couple edits in it, so I'll just, let me just forward you the. I just sent you the forwarded word. Chuck can put a couple edits in.
Okay, so it's that. Yep, so that's the last one I have. Alright, hold on one sec, everyone will see what I'm seeing. So this is the version here, Chuck?
Yes, it is.
Alright, so do you want to walk through this, Susan, or do you want to deliberate about it, or how do we want to proceed with this?
Well, I think our group has all seen it. Bincom has seen it, so I'd invite. The Board of Selectmen to take a look at it, read it, read it quickly. I like it. We could tweak, looking at it now, we could tweak the second paragraph to speak to your. To speak to the assessed value and the dollar amount that you just shared with us so that our information is consistent.
And also, oh, sorry. And I would say also, just to be consistent there, it says in this second paragraph, in this case, the decision has been made. Sounded to me like it was more. The discussion has been made, something like that. The way Ryan just put it is it hadn't been 100% set yet, and I think some of that has to do with just from previous experience. You don't necessarily know all your interest rates yet, so I think making sure that you've got enough options. Is probably the way it's typically gone. Ryan, I don't know if you just heard what I said there?
You mean about the borrowing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what we can say is the borrowing will be a very public process where we come to the Finance Committee and the Board when we have to make that decision. So the vote at town meeting and the vote at the ballot box allows us to borrow that. And then, once we have the authorization to borrow, we obviously find the cheapest and best, most impactful route for residents to take. So that'll be a public discussion after, but a lot of people ask, what is this going to cost? What are we looking at? What is this going to be? So this is our best estimate of what that's going to be, and it's going to be close. It's going to be around here. Depending on what happens with the economy, and they're conservative numbers, so hopefully we don't use contingency and. We don't have to have high interest rates because of the way the economy is, and maybe this number can be lower, but it could also be just a little bit higher, but it's going to be around here.
So I think we can tweak that second paragraph to speak more in terms of. Of a record, perhaps a recommendation at this point in time with a dollar amount?
Yeah, I think estimate works.
Alright, so we'll make that, we can make that tweak and then use the assessed value of 278 and the 87. $87. That you just posted.
And then in the last paragraph, just because I have to say it out loud, I guess we should discuss whether or not to. Even though I have nothing to hide about this, whether or not we should be using two different terms, which we are in that paragraph. By using both the override and debt exclusion terminology, more than anything, whatever it's going to be, I think consistency is just probably important. To use the same terms.
Yep, we'll make that change too.
So the most appropriate term is debt exclusion override. To use all three of words.
Let's just say, alright, well.
Yeah, just the first two, Susan.
We're gonna just say debt exclusion.
Got it.
Okay.
And I think when talking to folks, it's, these terms are not familiar to the average person who's not fully engaged in municipal government or volunteering. The difference between debt exclusion and a permanent override is, once you don't need the money for the borrowing anymore, the override goes away. As opposed to a permanent override, which increases the tax base forever. This is just to do this project. So once this project is done, then the override is done.
Right, right. I think we've tried to make that. Point in the second paragraph also.
Yep, and it's definitely a good point in this one. I mean, 40 years is a tough one. People will come up and say, look, I'm going to be dead in 40 years. My mom's going to be dead. My sister's going to be dead. You know, that's the sort of thing that comes in if it's a 40-year debt exclusion, but a 10-year debt exclusion is much more. Unlike a permanent override. Okay, alright, so Ryan, what's the action here?
So as long as the Finance Committee gets this to me in an improved form, then we can post it. And there was no one who wanted to write the against, so that will be written by Town Council, and it'll look a lot like. The reason for not voting for this is because your taxes will go up. That's what they normally write when they write it, and we choose them to write it because it's in our bylaws that they write it, if no one else does.
No one else, no one volunteered to write against it.
What does it do?
I need it for tomorrow morning.
Okay, if my group is good, I'll be happy to make these edits, and I can do them tonight and send them out to you, Ryan.
Okay, so you get to tell Susan what to do very.
No fighting, I'll do it.
Susan, I don't get to tell you what to do very often, so make sure you get it to me by the morning.
Right away, sir.
I immediately regret that.
That's right.
Okay, so if there's no questions on that, move on to the next item. Just close out some stuff. Okay, so just looking to see the Board and the Finance Committee, if there's any other information you want put out from staff. Or any other things included in town meeting or about the town meeting warrant, or anything else that concerns you. As we are doing our dry runs and rehearsals right now, and we'll be working early next week to make sure it runs as smoothly as it can. So that's a question, is there anything else that? Anybody's thinking of or wants done from the staff?
I can't think of anything.
Nothing for me.
Okay, and we'll continue to update you if anything changes, but at this point, we're pretty set and excited to have what we think is the first outdoor town meeting in town history. But of course, I'm sure someone will tell me it happened another time, so. Okay, so I'm going to go through these pretty quick, the budget and then. Some items here and then some transfer questions. So in terms of the budget, a couple of good news for once. The Dispatch has worked through, they've had enough time where they're not estimating anymore, and they could get to real numbers in terms of revenue and expenditure. So our Dispatch estimate went down from where we expected it to be. About a $5,000 savings, so we have that resiliency in our budget if we need to use it, which I think we will in the fall. And also insurance came in a couple thousand dollars under where we would expect. And for those out there who are getting insurance rebates from their providers, I just want to remind folks that the reason why, on the municipal government side, we're not getting rebates. Is because we're still using all of our vehicles and other things, unlike the schools or your personal vehicle, let's say. So we didn't get, although costs are a little bit lower, we didn't get what most people are getting right now, which is insurance rebate. So I just want to make that point, because I've had a couple people bring it up, and I'm sure it'll come up again. But we did get a very favorable insurance increase this year of a little under 3%, so we saved a couple thousand dollars in what we were expecting. So that's good. The next budget item I want to talk about is the CARES Act, while I have the Finance Committee here. So for those that don't know.
Ryan, sorry. Do you have something that you're showing? Because my screen, I don't have any visual at all as far as if you have anything that you are itemizing or showing us.
Not yet, but I'm about to, so.
Okay, thank you.
You haven't missed anything yet, so the, or you won't miss anything, I should say. So for those who aren't familiar with the CARES Act, so the CARES Act is the umbrella name for. The federal money that is flowing to residents, governments, businesses. For stimulus, or however you want to phrase it, to cover the COVID-19 unexpected expenses, unemployment, etc. So the state got a large sum of money, or a sum of money from the federal government, that they are divvying up. And allowing for towns and municipalities to take. So we have the ability to apply for the use of COVID money, we're calling it. Or CARES Act money in order to cover the costs of things that were not budgeted. That we've been paying for in order to make sure that our town employees and residents are safe and complying with all of the standards that have been out there. So this isn't a wish list, as many thought it was in the beginning, but it is, if you need it, you can buy it, and right now the CARES Act is covering it. I just want to go over what we've applied for so far, so people know we're doing our due diligence, and then what the future of the CARES Act is going to look like. So we talked a lot about expenses this spring that are related to COVID. We've been coding all of our expenses into a special account called the COVID account in order to. Detail some of the expenses, because we knew that we'd either be able to apply for a MEMA or FEMA grant, and then we were hoping that this stimulus money would come in as well. So anything that is eligible for the MEMA or FEMA grant, we have to apply for that grant still. But anything, so that's 75% of costs for some items. Other items are not going to be covered by MEMA or FEMA, and we can use CARES Act for that. For that 25% that's not covered by MEMA, we can also use CARES Act for, and I'll show you what I mean. So so far, in order to provide the services we need for COVID-19. Here are some of the sanitation costs that we've had, adding Plexiglas to town hall, additional cleaning supplies and sanitation. We've had some expenditures for IT and remote working. Right now, we're requiring all of our town employees to use their phones, so we want to give them a compensation for that. For being willing to answer their phone at any time of the day, also some remote capacities for their home offices. They're being asked to use their papers, their printers, their computers, so when they, when they needed something, we got for. The town clerk has estimated a pretty good chunk of cost for running the election in a COVID-19 environment. And trying to do her best to keep everybody safe there, to include an additional police officer and some disinfecting materials. The Fire Department bought some respirators to beef up their protection. We moved some services online like payroll. And then the big expense that the Board's been tracking has been the increased police presence we've had. Initially, a very large increased presence, and then recently been back towards a normal or enhanced protection posture. And then we've been, we've been running Dennis Ragged, so we are recommending that he get an additional stipend this year for applying for thousands of dollars he's going to get us. So overall, in this application. One sec, this drops. So we applied last week for this grant. Okay, everything has been, I received training on it. This is how much we could potentially be eligible for, 422,000. In this part, this is our direct costs or FEMA reimbursable police costs, etc. It's kind of a complicated form, but here's the remote stuff, extra PPE. Cleaning of buildings, that's the sanitation line you saw. Okay, so overall, we applied for $63,500. Some of this stuff applies to bigger towns than ours, not the way we do it. So 56 of that is eligible for FEMA reimbursement, which we'll apply for next, so we got. 14,000 of that upfront, plus 75 for a total of 21.5, and then another 2,500 to cover the election. So we should be getting $24,000 next week. We'll be able to pay down some of the, or recode some of the COVID lines, and then purchase any of the stuff that we're thinking we need in the next month or so. With this COVID money, and then we should see the MEMA reimbursement in a couple months, rather than the usual year. So that's what we've done with the CARES Act. I know people have heard a lot about it, it's somewhat confusing, so I wanted to explain it to both boards, to see if they had any questions on any of that for FY '20. And then I'll go into what we're going to do in '21. You're muted then.
I know, my mouse froze and I couldn't unmute, so. The 422,000 that you said were eligible for, is that just a calculation based on, I won't even start listing things. What is that calculation based on, as far as you know?
Population.
Okay. And another question is, how big of a chunk of money went into the CARES Act? Do you know that?
For Massachusetts?
Yeah, was it like a hundred million dollars? I mean, was it a billion dollars? I mean, meaning.
So if Hubbardston got 400,000, I can only imagine, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
That's what I mean, I did the quick math on my phone going, it's crazy numbers. So I guess what it was coming down to too is obviously this is upfront money you're talking about, we're going to get paid. But then there's, you know, sort of phase two of the completed payment on it. If there's 365 towns and cities and whatnot with hundreds of millions of dollars or whatever the numbers are, they're still pretty confident that they're gonna move through payment on some of that stuff?
So we already have the money, so, yes.
We have all the money.
Yep. So we will have what we just applied for and we have up to that allocation you saw, 422,000 to apply for by December. And towns that have already applied or applied a little bit earlier than we did have already received the money, so.
Okay, can we apply for pain and suffering?
I wish, you would be amazed at the things that people were trying to apply for, so.
Okay, thanks.
But we did receive a lot of instruction, so it's an in and out thing. So you can't ask for something that you want, you have to ask for something that you're going to use and you have to outlay the money, so it's not, you know, it's not as simple as, well, we think we're going to do this, so we're, just get the money. We don't have the cash flow for that, so the idea is ask for what you need, use it and cover your costs so that the towns don't go bankrupt or have cash flow problems. So Susan or anyone from the finance committee, have any questions on any of that?
No, I'm good.
So what it means mechanically is some of the worries we had about free cash, although we still have revenue concerns, on the expense side, we should be okay.
Right.
So we should still be, because we typically don't spend all the money that we're given because of our tight fiscal controls, we should be back to that level with the reimbursements from MEMA and the CARES Act, so. All the COVID stuff that we were worried about seems to have been solved for the time being. Who knows what the future will have? So in FY '21, what we're looking to do is first see if the government is going to allow us to cover any revenue shortfalls with CARES Act money. So what that might look like is the state could cut 100,000 from our state aid, but we could apply for CARES Act money or federal money to offset that. So that is something that every city in town is advocating for and might happen because if the state's cutting state aid, everyone, they're going to want to make them whole somehow. So I'm hoping that goes through, so we'll keep some aside for that.
And I mentioned this last time too, but I just want to reiterate. And anything relative to the school districts would apply on their own for any of the similar type revenue shortfalls?
Correct. But the, and I'm just, this number is close but not exact. They got about 180,000 from the CARES Act that they can apply for, which is not enough for a $40 million budget. So the idea is that we're working through is can the schools separate, let's say there's a huge transportation increase, which based off any models about school in the fall, it looks like there's going to be. Then they could set aside those costs into a COVID line like we did and we could use our CARES Act money to supplement them and pay down our assessment. So I know that was a little confusing, but what I'm trying to say is we could use a chunk of CARES Act money instead of paying from the general fund in order to offset our assessment costs, which should cover any projected increases they have in our assessment because of COVID. So it's still up in the air and it's kind of a convoluted way of saying, we think we can use some of this CARES Act money to pay our school assessment if it's true that our school assessment is going to skyrocket because of COVID.
But we're going to have to know what that assessment is before we can try to get any.
Right, so I am meeting with, or trying to meet with, school officials in the coming weeks to see if we can work out the mechanics of this across our five towns so that we can maximize our ability to cover school costs because otherwise they're going to crush us. But we also don't know what school is going to look like in the fall, which is a legitimate question they have, so that's why there's so much budget flux there. But bottom line, what I want you to take from it is we're looking at ways to use CARES Act money to offset some of our budget problems for the school side, thanks. And then lastly, we are looking at a little bit of additional police coverage and a little bit of additional fire coverage and a lot of extra sanitation for when we open Town Hall, which we will be applying for these same grants for, and I will keep you posted on all of that. So we will only use that stuff if we can cover it with CARES Act money. And we should be able to because that's the point of the CARES Act money, is to provide these services without crushing municipal budgets. So we're looking into all that and I will keep you updated on that.
Okay.
Because when we did the initial calculations on some of this stuff, I was not sleeping at night and many of you were worried about the increased service costs. I think this is the solution, so I just want to keep you updated on what we're thinking and what we're doing.
Okay, thanks.
So that's CARES Act, then. Okay, so budget transfers, and this needs vote from, this one needs a vote from both boards. So we talked about the fire department and engine, the problems, excuse me, the problems we were having with engine two. So we paid some money to evaluate engine two and the fire department was able to absorb that cost. We said it was going to be somewhere between 2,000 and $30,000, hoping that 30,000 was super conservative and it was. So the final repair ended up being a touch under $4,000. So the fire department is looking to cover that cost with some unexpected, unexpended funds from the ambulance side of the house. So because it's two different departments, they need a transfer authorized by the Board of Selectmen in the finance committee. This is allowed under the Municipal Modernization Act after May 15th of any year in order to cover that repair, that unexpected repair cost, because right now, they don't have any money left in their repair budget. So the vote we're asking for is a $5,000 transfer from ambulance, other and services combined into the fire department services line. Sorry, Jeff.
No, it was me, Ryan, you were breaking up when you told me the cost of repairs. What was the total cost to repick the engine?
3,800.
Oh wow, that's great. Okay.
Yeah, that was really good news, I was pumped.
All right, so do we have, do we have a few of these, Ryan?
That's the only one.
Okay, so why don't we, Susan, it's okay with you. Why don't we start as a select board first where somebody can make a motion and we can go from there and then the finance committee will go after that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm making the motion to transfer the $5,000.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Chris, seconds, any discussion? Okay, little vote, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And, yes, okay, unanimous, Susan?
Okay, I'm taking a motion to approve the two transfers.
Second it.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I thought you just made it, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion to approve the two transfers.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? We're all in favor, Susan votes yes.
Shannon, yes.
Josh, yes.
Chuck, yes.
Maria, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks guys, Ryan?
Okay, so the next one is just for the finance committee, but of course, I won't kick the Board of Selectmen out. The, we discussed previously with both of these boards that the school water tank needs to be assessed. And that happens every three years and this year it wasn't budgeted for on the school side of the house and we are being asked to pay this bill. So it's $7,500, it's going to happen next week, they're closing down the water tank for its inspection, this is absolutely required. So we're looking for a reserve fund transfer, right now there's 8,300 in the reserve fund. So we'd like to use 7,500 to cover this unexpected cost.
The motion?
I'll make the motion.
I do.
Approve 7,500.
Yep.
I'll second the motion.
All righty, any discussion, questions?
So that'll leave us with $800 in the reserve fund?
Yes, and we will not need it again.
Okay, Susan votes yes.
Shannon, yes.
Josh, yes.
Chuck, yes.
Maria, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so Susan, those two votes were critical tonight, just to get the budget set before town meeting. The rest of the information I thought the finance committee should know and weigh in on. Other than that, I don't have anything else for finance committee unless you have any other business or want to say.
Uh, I don't, well, let me ask my group if we have any other business, I don't think we do.
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm good.
All right, Josh and Shannon, you're good, all set?
Yeah, all set, thanks.
Okay, great, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
You, Susan votes yes.
Shannon, yes.
Josh, yes.
Chuck, yes.
Maria, yes.
All right, thank you all, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, real quick, real quick, Shannon, I didn't see, I didn't see your name on the sample ballot.
No, it was, it wasn't an easy decision, but having a newborn and in the middle of a pandemic to even like, just having a newborn trying to think about dealing with that wasn't happening. So, sorry guys.
You want us to write, everyone to write?
I mean, if you want to, go for it.
I just, I just wanted to take a quick second to thank Shannon for her service to the town. As you heard, she has a newborn and has still been committed to a very difficult budget process and has worked with me my entire time on two very difficult budget processes. So always informed, always reads up and has been a great volunteer for the town and hopefully she comes back in another capacity because we could use that type of intelligence and dedication.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon.
You're a quitter, you're a big quitter, so.
You can blame my daughter.
That's what we meant to say, that's right. All right, thanks everybody, we'll see you next week.
Bye guys.
Bye.
All right, what did we just finish there, Ryan, we?
We're close, so we're at 6F.
Wish I don't have all my, 4F.
Sorry, 4F, 4F.
Okay, approval of mailing refund checks with tax bill, which we need to vote on.
Yes, so it's a simple error that was made this year that had some impact. So when we switched to the Vadar software and they were calculating our tax payment in, back in January, we put 3% instead of 1.5% in for CPA and this affected about 400 bills. We contacted everybody that it impacted and are refunding people that 1.5%. So in order to do that, we're asking the board to support the inclusion of this refund check into the tax bill in order to save some money and time. The reason why we have to ask you for this is because nothing is allowed to go in the tax bill except for the taxes without your vote. And the only restriction on what you can put in there is you cannot put anything political. So Sandy put a letter in your folders explaining this and asking you to support including the refund checks into the tax mailing for efficiency and cost savings. And I know that's a lot, so any questions for sure?
Nope, I don't have any, so if you want to move forward with this, somebody can make a motion.
Well, I guess I'll make the motion then to include the refund checks into the mailers of the tax notices.
Second the motion.
Okay, seconded, any discussion? Oh, little vote, Dan, yes, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, sounds good, moving on. We're at item five, which is old business, I don't have any, Ryan, do you or does anyone else here? No. Okay, and then we're at item six, which is the town administrator report, which I'm assuming we've already covered a few things on, but why don't you take us through here, Ryan?
I'll take it off mute, so a lot of it, we've already covered. We're continuing to provide COVID-19 information and work through our reopening plan, so we encourage people to ask questions and provide input. On the department side of the house, again, we are working on our capacity to reopen and making sure our employees and residents are safe. So this is going to look like folks being allowed to make appointments with our staff, our staff returning to, a lot of them are already working in Town Hall in a socially distanced manner, but returning more full-time. We're going to ask that folks wear masks and respect social distancing. And we'll make sure there's a ton of signage and folks are following those rules. For the time being, we are not going to allow indoor appointments with police and fire except for firearm permits, which are allowed, but we can make case by case exceptions to that in order to facilitate the public's needs. So for financial management, we already talked about the CARES Act and went through that in detail to include the budget items I talked about, which is the dispatch budget and the insurance budget. So this is new, but something that we've been talking about. So in the goal session for this year, the board asked me, and the planning board asked me to explore uses for our town pit. And much like the town center water resiliency study, what I'm looking to give the board is some direction on what can or cannot be done so that we can make an informed and pointed decision on what we want to do with town land like the town pit. So this came from many discussions where folks are saying, we should put X here or we should put Y here. And what I'd like to give is a range of things that the board can do and the planning board can do in order to focus that discussion more and move it from a nebulous to a directed. So we met with a group a while back, a consultant who applied for a site readiness application for us to look at some light commercial use and what it would look like to combine our town pit with other people who are interested in getting rid of their pits in the area. We didn't get that grant, but the state was very interested in this piece of land, especially since we wanted to create a public-private partnership possibly and because of its proximity to Route 2 Gardner, et cetera.
Ryan, what does officials from the state mean? Is that a DEP as far as permitting and regulations or is that some other agency?
It's the economic development side of the house. Ed Starzak, so he's going to come out on, so I met with him again and I've been on a little bit of a push with the state saying that they need to pay attention to smaller towns like Hubbardston where, you know, if you're not going to give us school money and you're not going to give us state aid, then you need to give us help in order to help us help ourselves, right? And that's on the economic side of the house. So we put a little pressure and they're, not only that, but they're also interested in this project because it is a promising project, as everybody in town has stated, let's do something with that land. So we told them that if we couldn't do something economic development side, we wanted to look at affordable housing options or maybe senior housing options, which we identified in the MVP study. And they want us to make sure that we exhaust any economic development. So long story short, they're coming out Thursday and we're going to meet, Alice and I, Alice from the planning board, are going to meet with John, one of the consultants we've been working with, and Ed from the state in order to walk this land and see what can be done and get a site readiness application together that would allow us to assess this land and put together some potential uses. in order to walk this land and see what can be done and get a site readiness application together that would allow us to assess this land and and put together some potential uses.
Ryan, what time you're going to be doing that?
Uh, that's at ten o'clock on Thursday.
Could I join you?
That's what I was going to ask, is if a board rep would come, uh, as this was one of the board's goals for me and for itself, I think it would be good for us to have a liaison there, so.
I'd like to. What we're going to do, meet at the building or where?
We'll meet at the Slate Building, and we would go together, uh, only two per car with masks.
Okay.
So if the board is okay with Jeff being the rep, then that's an update on that and what I was looking to get you to do.
Absolutely.
So all of this should feed into um the master plan, right? So all the stuff we've been talking about tonight and this year, just trying to get all of this into the master plan, so there's a directed future for for some of these long-term projects. And I'm hearing what everybody's saying, and they want to get some stuff done, and so do I, so that's what we're trying to do. The school roof, we went over quite a bit, so I will skip by that, except to say that um that information is is available, and if folks want to ask questions, please do. So employee recognition, for those who don't know, I was called to to state active duty for the civil unrest in the state last week. It was not, it was never great timing for that, but with town meeting and everything, it wasn't great timing, so. Just want to thank the whole staff and all of our volunteers who covered my responsibilities, um, did a lot of stuff for me. I was trying to do a lot of stuff by phone on longer convoys and things, and uh people really, really stepped up and covered for me, and they were very understanding that they were also doing some of my job as well. So none of the big deadlines were missed, uh, to include town meeting, the town election, and end of year financials. So I just want to thank the entire staff for that. I also want to thank the Police Department, they've been assisting neighboring towns in some mutual aid type ways because of some of the civil unrest, also for Rutland and the unfortunate loss of one of their police officers to COVID nineteen, and um they're serving during a difficult time right now. So I just want to to recognize that they've always been very focused on community policing, have been cited many times for their community policing involvement and their willingness to to get involved with the Hubbardston community. And I think based off of different social media posts and other things that have been coming into the Police Department, the Hubbardston community feels very good about their Police Department and has shown that gratitude, so I hope the staff feels that as well, because it's it's a tough time to be a police officer right now. It's a tough time to be in this country right now, to be honest, so. And I'd also like to thank Kelly specifically for working with me to make sure we didn't miss any of that CARES Act money, which is so vital to our town's financial future. And Christina, who's been just doing amazing work with the Assessing Department, um, cleaning up some some old stuff on the administration side from a turnover of administrative assistants and really paying close detailed attention to the things that need to happen and catching things before they become an issue and and get to you for some type of decision, so. She's going above and beyond, and she should be recognized, so you you guys in this town has a tremendous staff. And I know I like to thank them a lot, but in the last month, given everything that's going on with COVID and everything, they've just been doing really great, so I'd like you to know that, I'd like the town to know that, and I'd like them to know that. That is my report.
All right, thank you, um, and thanks very, very much for that, Ryan. Okay, uh, so we've got a few more items here, not much left, but uh the next would be item seven, policies to review, which we have none. Uh, appointments and resignations and wage authorizations, which we have none. May twenty six meeting minutes, I don't actually have them in front of me at this point. Is somebody else looking at them that can say um who was there? It wasn't all that long ago.
Everybody but Chris.
Okay. But let's just push, let's just push this off till we have a, there's no rush on this, so we're going to, we're going to push this one off, okay, Ryan?
Okay.
Next item would be eleven, which is committee updates. Uh, I don't have any. Item twelve, matters not reasonably anticipated by chair, none for me, guys. Uh, or if you have anything else you want to bring up that has popped in your head?
No.
Okay.
So as of right now, we do not have a meeting planned for for um for next week. I might have a placeholder for you thirty minutes before town meeting in case anything needs to be done at the last minute, but that's subject to change. The the only thing pending right now that that wasn't, that we discussed today that that has been kind of simmering issue is when can folks hold public meetings not in Zoom, because there are some boards who haven't held a meeting in a while because because of the Zoom platform. So this might come to you through the Board of Health or or others for for a decision, so I'll be pushing information to you as we get it in from from state and local officials on what to do next. It's it's something that the state really hasn't addressed, because they've been focused on the elections and town meeting, so. When can we meet in person again is is a hot issue in Hubbardston right now, so I expected you to hear about it.
Okay, thanks, yeah. Um, tough one for some people, no doubt. Okay, so we're, I don't see anyone else on, but have have any questions or anything come up, public or press wise?
I don't see anything. No.
Okay, so we're at that time.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, see none? Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Dan, yes? We are adjourned at eight oh seven PM?